And that's because in every question, if there was a response that either a person did not answer the question or did not wish to answer the question, those were included in the 100% response. So maybe yes is 80%, no is 10%, and maybe 10% of people didn't respond to that question. So when you look at these results, be aware of that. So in terms of where in Kenmore people lived, about half of the respondents lived and/or work south of SR 522. 31% live and/or work on the north side of SR 522, and 14% live on one side and work on the other side. So that's where the folks who responded came from. Most have lived in Kenmore more than 10 years, and most were between 40 and 60. That's 49%. That's a little bit older than the census would state. The census, the mean age is 39 and 1/2 years. Then again, a lot of those under 39 and 1/2 are probably not going to be responding to the survey. Most respondents live in a single-family residence, 88%. In our census data, about 70% of the housing units in the city are single-family, so that population may be slightly overrepresented. And over 50% of the respondents are living with children. So one of the questions we asked was, what, how would you describe Kenmore? And we had several different options, but three rose to the top, and one really rose to the top. So the favorite community descriptor of the, those that were provided, 42% liked Kenmore as a vibrant waterfront community. The other two, a quiet suburban community, or a thriving and sustainable community, as you can see, are sort of neck and neck. And then the other options that were provided had a lesser percentage. We also asked a question about small-town feeling. That's currently, a phrase that's currently contained in the existing vision statement. And the first question we asked was, what does small-town feeling mean to you? And we gave people the option of four choices from a whole list of options. And again, as you look through the survey materials, you'll see what those were. The two that received the most votes were a place that feels safe and friendly, and a place where you know your neighbors and others in the community, and have a sense of belonging. Then the next question said, based on what you think is a small-town feeling, should Kenmore have a small-town feeling? And yes, 81% of respondents said Kenmore should have a small-town feeling. So I think that certainly answered that question. At this point, we started asking about different phrases that are in the vision statement. And so I'm going to run through all of these, and this is, I'll try to keep this quick, but there were a lot of components to the vision statement. The first one, Kenmore is, in 2035, a community that is family-friendly, that recognizes its history and values diversity. 41% agreed with that statement, 24% strongly agreed, 23% were neutral, 9% disagreed, and 3% strongly disagreed. I ran through that with this particular one because I wanted to show you how I laid these out. So we had these five points that people could choose: strongly agree, agree, neutral, disagree, and strongly disagree. The way I've ranked these on the slides are by the largest percentage to the smallest percentage. And in every case, most people agreed with the statements. So there was not a single case where people disagreed with the statements. So I wanted to point that out as we go through here, and you'll see that some were strongly agree was at the top of the list versus agree. In one case, neutral and disagree changed places, but I'll just run through these quickly. So the next one is about health, safety, and welfare of all citizens. Here's one where 47% strongly agreed. You can see the numbers. A community with a safe, reliable, and effective system of streets, transit routes, sidewalks, bikeways, and trails. Another strongly agree, 54%. A community that fosters a sense of belonging and pride and makes use of the skills of its citizens through volunteerism and public involvement. 40% agree, 30% strongly agree. A community that supports the character of its single-family residential neighborhoods. 35% agree, 30% strongly agree. So this one didn't rate quite as many positive responses. A community that offers a range of housing types. 35% agree, 24% neutral. This is the one, as you can see, where strongly agree and neutral traded places on this one. A community that actively protects natural and environmentally sensitive areas, significant open space, trees, and air and water quality. 59% strongly agree, 29% agree. Community with its own sense of place and an identifiable, walkable downtown. This is an interesting question, and when we get to the end of this set of slides, I have two slides that talk about what were the most popular responses and what were the least popular responses. And this one reappears, so we'll talk about that in a minute. A community that is connected both visually and physically to its waterfront. 59% strongly agree, 25% agree. A community with clear design standards. 39% agree, 31% strongly agree. A community that supports the arts. 40% agree, and 28% strongly agree. Schools. A community that supports and encourages education and quality schools. Certainly, hearing the earlier conversation today, 67% strongly agree and 23% agree. This was one of the highest and most supported phrases in the vision statement. A community that supports active, healthy lifestyles with well-maintained parks, trails, open spaces, and recreational facilities. 62% strongly agree, 29% agree. Prosperous and vibrant community with an economic base that provides for citizens, provides employment opportunities, and supports businesses. 39% strongly agree, 37% agree. You can see the trend here. All of them are supported. A community that is a good partner with citizens and governments throughout the region. 45% agree, 33% strongly agree. And the last one, a community with an informed citizenry working with an open, responsive government that seeks out and integrates public input. 43% strongly agree, 40% agree. So looking at all of these, I went back through and looked at the most popular components of all of those phrases. And you can see that, actually, I had them reversed. Schools was number two. A community that supports active, healthy lifestyles beat it by 1%. This is 91%. And the way I looked at this was to total those that said strongly agree plus those that said agree. So, a community that supports and encourages education and quality schools at 90%. A community that actively protects natural and environmentally sensitive areas at 88%. A community with a safe and reliable and effective system of streets, et cetera, at 86%. And a community that is connected both visually and physically to its waterfront came in at 84%. Now, the least popular components, again, the way I looked at this was to total the highest percentage of strongly disagree plus disagree. And a reminder, these numbers were smaller, quite a bit smaller. In every case, people supported the phrases, if you were looking just at straight numbers. So the first one, a community with its own sense of place and an identifiable, walkable downtown. 23% either disagreed or strongly disagreed with that statement. And I will tell you that it was the last phrase that most commonly was of concern to folks, integrated with higher-density housing. I actually went through all 272 surveys and looked at the responses, and they were pretty clearly either because people were not interested with more high-density housing, or because they didn't think the community would get there before 2035, that particular vision, or they didn't respond with any comment at all. It's very hard to interpret from the set of comments what the reasoning is, but the one that did stand out was the, were the number of comments about higher-density housing. The next one, a community that offers a range of housing types to provide a choice of attractive living accommodations for all residents. 19% disagreed or strongly disagreed with that statement. And the last one, a community that supports the character of its single-family residential neighborhoods. 14% disagreed with that statement. I think in all three of these statements, really, the issue is that very difficult balance between single-family and multifamily housing. So with that, that's sort of my summary of what is in, in the survey. Again, it's really interesting reading, and I hope you may have many questions after you've gone through it, but that you'll spend some time with it.
Questions? Councilmember Herbig.
So when is our next oper, I mean, I'm still going through all of this because this is, there's some very interesting comments in here. When are we next going to be able to kind of chime in on this?
Right. So the Planning Commission will be taking this up again tomorrow night, and then we'll be going through a series of meetings along with the rest of the comprehensive plan elements over the next couple of months. I think if, if council has comments or questions, I can be a point of contact. Formally, it would come back before you in April. Thank you.
May. May. Councilmember Sperry.
Thank you for putting this together so quickly with it closing this morning, and thank you, council commissioners, for waiting and waiting and waiting. And I hope it's, this is good stuff for you. Everybody's trying to read it here. One of my questions is on the comments. When you, they're numbered, are they just numbered like, like this was the first comment on this question? Is there any way to tell? I guess what I'm looking for is, say, there's number 30. Was that the number 30 survey gave these comments? No?
No.
Okay, maybe you can help me out here.
The, the tool provides just how many comments were received for a question. So that's the, those are the numbers that are provided in order. If you want to look at the individual comments that were made, so I was trying to do the cross-reference between how did people respond to question 12 and, and what comments did they make, you have to actually go into the individual surveys. And you can do that, and there's probably some sort of a cross-tabulation tool. I have not used that.
Okay.
But you can go into individual surveys and see if this person answered. I am one of those who does not live or work in Kenmore, and what did that specific person say? You can, you can get that information. But we did not put that out.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I thank you for doing this. We saw the redlined edition of this at our retreat, and a lot of it was wordsmithing changes and emphasis and so on. And I, you know, I tend to agree with, with what's in it, and I tend to, I'm encouraged by what the survey tells us. But I do want to point out that the vision statement is a policy statement. That's a policy statement that really should originate with the council, the way I see it. And I appreciate the Planning Commission weighing in on this and commenting on it and making some suggestions, and I appreciate the survey. It's really well done. But it all comes back to the council as a policy statement on which the rest of the comprehensive plan is based. So the vision statement doesn't, doesn't result from the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan really should result from the vision statement. So, you know, we, I think the council will look at it. I think it should have been wordsmithed by the council a little bit more in our retreat so that we said, this is what we'd like to see. This is our initial thoughts. This is our rough draft. Planning Commission, can you refine it for us? Now, that would have made sense to me, but it's coming the other way. We haven't had a chance really to weigh in on it yet, so.
If I may respond a little bit, I think, as I said, is any amendments to the comprehensive plan usually come, a recommendation comes from the Planning Commission to the council, who the Planning Commission are reflecting the community input. When the draft was developed, we took a look at the budget process that council went through, looking at the results maps. We took a look at policy changes that have come from, through the state, right? We looked at any other changes. So the vision statement, the draft that was presented to you, took a look at the work that the council had done on the results map through the budget, which, again, reflected what the community thought was important. And we looked at things that were not already in the vision statement, whether it was healthy, active living, for example, was one that we included in the vision statement. So we've tried to reflect, again, previous work that the council has done to obtain community input, as well as now kind of, I guess, ground-truthing that again with the community. Council will have the opportunity to look at the Planning Commission recommendation, and is the body responsible for adopting the amendments in May and in June. So again, that's, that's how the process works. And again, if there is any specific changes or direction or questions that you would like to give the Planning Commission this evening, now's the opportunity as they begin work on reviewing the vision statement at the next few meetings.
My only comment is the vision statement is a council statement. There are seven members of the council that are elected by the citizens. It appears in our, in all our documents, a vision statement, goals, and so on. The vision statement doesn't originate with the comprehensive plan. It's my, maybe I'm mistaken, but I think the comprehensive plan evolves from the vision statement. Am I reading things wrong? Do I have the wrong opinion on this?
It's a component of the comprehensive plan.
Well, it's added to it, but it doesn't originate there.
It, that's, it's kind of like the summary of the comprehensive plan, kind of like the council goals that you set each year summarize what's important to the council. The vision statement is a component of the comprehensive plan. It's not a standalone document.
Then why is it standalone in, in other documents?
Because, again, it's a summary of the whole comprehensive plan. It's summarizing what the long-term vision is and the goals in the comprehensive plan are to help you get to that vision.
No, and I see where the deputy mayor is going. I mean, it, to me, the vision statement is the big overall statement, and the comprehensive plan flows from it, so. Well, I understand what he's saying. Some of these responses are interesting, to say the least. Do you have any thoughts on, I mean, some of them are very, very negative.
It's split. I mean, I think if you ask people, it's, you will, you never get complete agreement, and there's usually a spectrum from agreement to disagree, and that's why we asked the question. Some people strongly disagree. But again, trying to pick out individual comments as reflective of what everybody feels, it's hard to kind of focus on one comment rather than another, which is why we didn't include the comments in the presentation this evening.
No, and I appreciate that fact. I'm just looking through these, these comments. Some of them are very interesting. Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Curtis.
Well, it is interesting, and I think, like any survey, when anybody can go on and do a survey, you're going to get a cross-section, and that means you get people that love what you're doing and people that hate what you're doing. And I think anybody that sits up here or sits over there, you know that we have, for as many people that like what we're doing, there's always people that feel like we could do much better, and this is a great opportunity for them to voice a lot of that frustration. So I, I wouldn't take it personally, Mr. Mayor.
I can't help it. I do.
But if, but it is, it is a learning tool, and, and I am very comfortable with the results of this, and as you, the Planning Commission works through the vision statement and everything, I mean, it comes to us, and, and we still get to have the final vote on it. So it's, I'm, I'm not uncomfortable in the least with the process, and I look at it as it's more input for us to make an educated decision, so I'm, I'm fine with that. And I actually am happy with that process.
Councilmember Curtis and Councilmember Sperry.
So I guess, you know, I see it as the vision statement we inherited from the previous vision statement. So it isn't that the Planning Commission is coming up with a new vision statement. So we started with that one, and the question is, should it be amended? And as I look at these answers to the question, I said, hey, we did a pretty good job last time around, because there's no major changes. Mostly, people are supportive of the things we've been listing every single year and every single retreat for all the years I've been on council. So that makes me think, you know, there's no major place where we're off, that big major changes needed. So I was encouraged by the, the results.
Councilmember Sperry.
Thank you. Well, I was going to ask the commissioners. I know we just have all kind of taken our look at it within the last hour or so, but do you have any questions for us? Do you have any thoughts as you're looking at this? Is there anything? I mean, you've waited a long time, so now's your time to ask some questions here.
Yeah. Angela.
Thank you. I have a question on some of the terms that were used that seem to be very, struck a note for many people. In particular, I picked up on history. Our history seemed to be debated quite a bit, some people saying, we have no history. What history? What are you talking about? Others saying, yes, we should emphasize that. The other one that I noticed seemed to have a lot of debate also is the term diversity. And I'd be curious to know, like, how we define diversity, because I noticed some comments here that are also related to family-friendly seem to imply that maybe we are emphasizing families and not single people, right? So I would, I would welcome your perspectives specifically on those three things, including, you know, our history, a focus on our history. Do we want to mention specifically family-friendly? And, and if we do use diversity, if you feel like that's a valuable term, how do you describe diversity?
Well, let's go down the line. Councilmember Smith.
I would, on the, let me touch on the history one. I look at the Kenmore Heritage Society and everything they do, and they're all volunteers. And I, I think they add a valuable component to what Kenmore is, and so I would encourage the inclusion of the word history somewhere in there, just because I think it would be somewhat of a slap at them for all that they've contributed to our, our city, and they're great volunteers. On the diversity side, I actually, I didn't think of it as having to be defined. And so, so I guess I'll just leave it at that. I actually like the fact, in some ways, that it's not defined, because then it's maybe less offensive to some people, too. Once you start to wordsmith a word like diversity, I think you probably end up getting stronger opinions one way or another, and that's maybe a bad thing.
Councilmember Sperry.
Yes. Well, actually, the survey said vibrant waterfront by a long line. Just the, I think the history might have troubled people or been a confusion, because, you know, we're not Bothell. We don't have 100-year-old buildings. And so if a person thinking, well, what's the history? Almost everything's new here. But really, where that did come from was that Kenmore Heritage Society started just about the time that the city did. That was where it came. And so I, I know our first mayor was quite involved in that, and so I'm sure that that's part of why history is in it. So depending on what the person was thinking, you know, you know, new buildings, old buildings, I can see where they were confused by that. I don't really have much to add as far as the diversity. I mean, to me, diversity means that you're welcome, whether you're single or married or have kids or don't, or what, how you think. You know, it includes ideas, too. It's not just how you look. So, you know, I, I've always loved our motto about courtesy is contagious, so I just feel like that's part of it. Anyway, great questions.
Councilmember Curtis.
So on the history question, it makes me think that maybe we haven't advertised our history to the new folks in town. So some educational opportunities. Family-friendly, I think a lot of us, not that we discriminate against people that are single, but I think their, the school district is strong. Some of the decisions that are made in terms of gambling and other things have been kind of family-centric. So I think that's an important concept the city has stood for. And diversity, again, my mind is, it's all diversity. So age, you know, young and old, males, females, all religions, all cultures are welcome in Kenmore. And I like the idea of, don't define it too much, because you just get in trouble.
Councilmember Herbig.
Well, I'm actually going to crib from a comment on page seven, comment number seven there. It says, values diversity will be dated soon. Diversity suggests, quote, "You are different. A better phrase is inclusive." And that one really struck home, because I actually think that's probably a better phrase than diversity, because diversity really is pointing out people's differences. Inclusive is much more welcoming. And I think that's kind of the feeling we're going for, rather than.
Right.
So, and that's part of why I was, I need more time reading this, because there's some good stuff in here, but a lot of it, so.
Really good stuff. Yep. Really good stuff.
Deputy Mayor.
My only comment is, I have Kakayamas, is that how you pronounce it? His book, and I'm about a third of the way through it, and he talks about studies of engagement of the citizens. And some are strongly engaged and moderately, but there's a block of people that are not engaged in what's going on in the city. I was one of them for many years before I got involved in, in things about a dozen years ago. I wasn't aware of the history of the city. I was too busy with other things, and I think there are a lot of people like that. Now, what this tells me, history, what history, is that we need to do a better job cherishing and publicizing our history and being proud of our history and the things that have gone on, and to involve more and more of the citizens in the activities of the city, the history, the current events, the fun things that we do, and all that sort of thing. So I think it's telling me that. Not that, not that we have no history. It's just they're disengaged and aren't aware of it.
Councilmember Danuski.
I agree with the other council members on the diversity part, or I mean, on the history part, and I like Councilmember Herbig's inclusive rather than diversity. I think that's a really good idea. I haven't read the comments on the family-friendly, so I do like the idea of family-friendly, but maybe we can open up the statement to, you know, include some more. But I'd really have to read it before I could speak intelligently. Also, just, I guess, noting in my mind that, you know, this is information from 270 people out of 21,000 people. So in a way, I'm trying to just kind of figure out if this is really what everybody in Kenmore thinks, or if everybody who, you know, likes Kenmore and everything were the ones that, you know, responded to the survey. So I'm just kind of thinking about that, too.
Yeah, I think, I think the inclusion of history is important. I think the work that the Historical Society has done needs to be out there more. I think we need to do more with it. It's a, it's a valuable body of work. I certainly agree with Councilmember Herbig on the inclusive rather than diverse. I've seen it in National League of Cities. I mean, that's, that's the term that people are now using. It means so much more, you know, inclusive. We've got waterfront, we've got economically disadvantaged residents, we've got everything in between. We've got the young, we've got the old, we've got families, we've got singles, with some of the development that's happening here. We're going to find more singles, but that's okay. They're all part of the community that's in, and we're inclusive. So if you want to think of the city as one big family, then it's family-oriented.
Maybaker.
Yes. Yeah. If, I have a question as well, or maybe a comment. I'm Mike Mulcair. I'm one of the new planning commissioners. Laurie, if you wouldn't mind just going back one slide, one of the things that stuck with me, and I've just had access to this data, the the same amount of time that you folks have, but I think the continuity that we saw with the least popular comments around, you know, identification of housing is matched by the continuity of the most popular comments around, and what our community's looking for. I think they speak with a very loud voice about what is important to them. And that should be reflected in the vision statement as well as in everything we do for the next, for the next 20 years. There, it seems that they're looking for opportunities to connect with one another outdoors in an active way. And I think that we, as planning commissioners and as city council members, have a great many opportunities and tools to do that. I was looking through the agenda for tonight's meeting, looking at just some of the financial data about budget allocations, and I saw $350,000 allocated towards the skate park, which is a great start for 2015, but then a deferment of funds for Morelands Park renovation, which is to 2018. And so I see that there'll be quite a bigger investment over the years, an aggregate million-dollar-plus investment. But it sounds like the community, if we can look at 272 responses, that one-point-something percent response rate, as a significant voice. But I think if we look at this slide as well as the least popular slide, a pretty consistent voice that people are looking to be outdoors in our community and being active. And I think we should honor that, both through the vision statement and in our actions.
Anything else?
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah. Deborah Shrevni.
Thanks, Mayor Baker. Yeah, I would agree with that completely. And I, you know, this is very exciting to me to see that, you know, after all these years, that this theme is still very, very prominent. And, you know, if we are to consider something like a bond measure, you know, there could be significant support for something like that if we, if it's played right to these, to these interests. So it's hopeful. And it also supports some of the investments that we've made recently along the waterfront as well.
Right. I was looking at, this whole past year has pretty much been waterfront-oriented, and I think it's met with some great successes. And so, and I'm not surprised by this, what you saw when you did the first survey waterfront, and they still want it. So nothing much has changed. Anybody else? Angela.
Excuse me. I'm getting over a cold. So, actually, Councilmember Sperry mentioned something to me recently where she said, you know, Kenmore considers itself a city of choice. And I had never heard that term as it refers to Kenmore, but I really liked it and would like to get your, your opinions on that. The reason why I like it is, at a high level, when we're talking about vision statement, the idea of choice is so appealing to me, right? Because it says that we have a lot of options, we have variety, people like choice, right? And depending on where you live, you don't always have a lot of options available to you. So I like the fact that it kind of set us apart. It's unique. And I'm wondering if that's a term that you guys use frequently, and if so, if that might be applied broader in, like a vision statement, or at least as a value in planning the comprehensive plan.
Go ahead.
I actually, I like the word a lot. I just, I don't, this is exactly why I like having input from the Planning Commission on this and not just our body trying to figure it out. Because that's, honestly, I've never, I've sit next to Laurie for three and a half years. I've never heard her refer to the city as that. So I like that. But that's, that's, I'm absolutely, I think it's, that's a neat word, and it is, it's options, it's choice. And that's, that's kind of neat.
Yeah, actually, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, in the context that we were talking about it, we were actually talking about the different levels of housing. Because we were talking about affordable housing, how expensive housing is getting on the east side, right? And so when she said that, she was saying how in Kenmore, there is a lot of choice. You can find housing at all, you know, economic levels. And I thought, that's great. That's a great way of describing it, I think.
Councilmember Curtis.
So to me, the word choice feels a little too vague. So the questions we've asked were more specific. So you can have choice over, you know, how you get to work, and choice over where you live, and choice over so many things, that it almost seems like it's too broad of a concept to pin down and use as a vision kind of statement. But that's just, I could see it go either way.
Councilmember Danuski.
I was going to say exactly what you said over there. Choice, if it was just a general statement, seems to be too much for, for me to think, choice of what, in what context. But I do like the idea of maybe getting the word choice somewhere in the housing part. That could, that could work.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, there's a range of housing for different, different demographic groups. And if we're diverse or inclusive, there has to be services for a diverse or any, or variety of different demographics and ages and so on. So there has to be that choice or that, that diversity of activities and facilities and things to facilitate, to provide for the services for all the different groups that we have in this city, the inclusive nature of the city. So I think it's implied by everything else. And as I say, as Milton commented, I'm not so sure that the word choice needs to be there. It's implied by the variety of everything we do have. Parks, water, nature, swamps, forests, you know, we've got it all. And you can choose what you want to, what playground you want to go to.
And have fun.
Councilmember Sperry. Do you want, do you want to weigh in on this one?
Not really. I mean, I think it's a good discussion. You know, I actually don't really remember what I said. But, you know, I do think that there is an aspect, though, of we do want to have, be the community that people who have a choice want to come to. And, you know, we've had, we just got another thing as a Seattle neighborhood. I can't remember, was it Seattle Magazine or something, as a top 10 neighborhood for Seattle? And if you look at what people want, you know, it's very consistent. You know, most people move because it's affordable. They have, there's a housing option for them. They want to be close to where they work, so it's a reasonable commute. They want good schools and they want recreation. And obviously, you know, it almost, we always forget it, but it's the safe community, you know, and that kind of thing, because we're so blessed and fortunate that we do have a safe community. And so those are pretty consistent. And, you know, we've got some unique assets, obviously, with the waterfront. You saw how that just leapt off the page. People really wanted that in there, so.
So were you referring to the Seattle Magazine article that picked Kenmore as one of the up-and-coming places to be because of the...
Right.
...getting to Seattle and Bellevue and the affordable housing prices and...
Well, this is about the fourth time. I mean, I remember Better Homes and Garden, we were a top 10 town for families. And I had to stop wanting to cut the concerts at St. Ed because they wrote those up. They said they were good, so, okay. But...
Business Journal, it said you were...
Yeah, Puget Sound Business Journal.
...one of the top cities to locate in the three-county region.
Seattle Met. And it's, again, the things are consistent, so.
Anybody else? Angela.
Sorry.
No, that's fine.
Just to, another perspective related to that, I think it's easy for the city to maybe to want to offer a ton of different services and to offer their residents a little of everything and to think that that is giving people a choice. But I do think it's possible, actually, if not conscientious about it, to end up in a position where you don't have a lot of choice. So when, you know, when North Shore School District was talking, I was thinking, my kids actually go to private school. And I love that there's a variety of options here. I love that there's a great public school here where a lot of families go to and they choose to send their kids to. And then I have, you know, options for Montessori school or religious schools or all different types of choices. So I think it's slightly different. We were kind of trying to finesse the wording when it came to housing. And on the Planning Commission, we were debating the use of affordable for very needy. And I thought it was really significant to leave that in there. I think that group, very needy group who cannot afford the majority of housing, I thought, needed to be called out specifically. As a group, we decided that housing for all people was what we ended on as wording, but I thought that was very different. So for me, like, choice does seem different to me than ending up with what we have or being intentional about bringing into the city what we want. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And I think on the housing thing, for me, and the different committees I've been involved in, I believe that people that are making $12, $15 an hour should be able to live in the communities they work in. And if that's affordable housing, then that's what it is. I think the term that's being used nowadays is workforce housing, that the average workers in the community are able to live in the community. So, I mean, I understand what you went through there. That's, that is, that's a tough one. So. Anybody else?
So, Mayor...
Thank you guys for thinking of all these different things. I mean, it's...
I understand, as council has the opportunity to read through the document, it may generate some questions or comments. And I would certainly encourage council to provide those comments to staff so that we can forward those to the Planning Commission. In the effort of efficiency, it would be most appreciated if you could provide those comments or questions within the next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Any other question? Councilmember Smith.
I do have, so the items that had the strongest response, I can't remember, we want a couple of the slides back earlier. I think it had, they were in the low 90% was either, there we go. So I'm curious, is, in this vision statement, do you envision you going through this and giving a, is this higher up on the list? Or how do, how would you address comments like this? I'm just curious how you differentiate a comment that has 91% versus a strong or agreeable support versus a comment of 75%? Is it just lower down the page?
I don't think we've reached a, or the Planning Commission hasn't really discussed what to do with that, whether there should be some ranking based on percentage or whether they're just kind of statements in no particular order. So if there is, I guess, a preference from the council to give to the Planning Commission would be one thing you could do.
I haven't thought about it in enough detail yet, just because I've seen it tonight. But it, it does seem appropriate somehow to give more emphasis to the, there's clearly some things that people feel very strongly about. I just don't know the best way to do that. So that's, I guess, not much guidance, but that's my thought on it.
We could put them in a bigger font.
Yeah.
I was just going to make one comment. When the Planning Commission was originally looking at the vision statement, they did move some phrases around with the thought that perhaps more significant ones would move, that all were important, but the more significant ones were closer to the top. So I don't know how we'll follow through with this new information, but...
Can I ask you one other question on that, then? Was there any thought in trying to pare down the document? It's a lot of things. And when I look at that, I just look at a document that this, this could fly in any city I've ever been to, that it's everything I would want in my city. And I think probably most people would say that. I'm just, and is there any way to make it more Kenmore?
I don't know the answer to that. It is quite long. But I will say that the, in the, when the Planning Commission initially looked at the draft, they took one or maybe two things out, but then they added one back in. I think it's really an effort to encompass all the different aspects of the community.
Diversity.
Yeah, right.
Inclusiveness.
Inclusiveness. I don't know if the council has a perspective on that, if you'd rather it were shorter or not.
I wouldn't be insulted if it was shorter.
Councilmember Curtis, then the deputy mayor, and then Councilmember Danuski.
I'm happy to leave at any length, as long as each sentence says something significant. As far as the order, sometimes things logically kind of group together. And I think the logical grouping is better than saying it has to be ranked from one to 15 or whatever. So some just sort of have a flow where they're fitting together. And I probably wouldn't, I wouldn't probably cut those apart.
Deputy Mayor.
I, you know, I agree with that, that it isn't necessarily a list of priorities in order. They're all important, or they wouldn't be there in the first place. But what, basic question I have is, we have this, this doesn't have the vision statement in it, and it isn't on the, on the iPad here. Are we talking about the vision statement that we received at the retreat? Is that the edition of it that we're, we're reviewing? Or is there something later than that?
No, that's the one that you're reviewing. That was the one that went to the public that the survey was asking for feedback on.
Thank you.
So how, what happened to the original vision statement? That, the Planning Commission changed it to what went to the public? Is that what happened?
The Planning Commission gave some recommendations, and that was presented to council in December and again at the retreat. So we were looking for, does this look about right before we took it out to the public?
Where the changes came from, from the original to the one that went out? Where did those changes? Did the Planning Commission make those changes?
The changes came from the Planning Commission after we, the staff had looked at the other documents to sort of let the Planning Commission know things that may have changed in the community, or looking at the results maps that the council had done. So again, the Planning Commission took all that into consideration before they made those edits to the original vision statement.
Great. Councilmember Danuski.
As far as ranking them, I don't think the document needs to be ranked, but I do think that people, when they read lists of statements, their mind does rank top to bottom. So just something to think about. We don't necessarily have to, but I think a lot of people who read it are going to assume that's what we're thinking.
Councilmember Herbig, do you have something? Councilmember Sperry, do you have something?
No, not at this time. No, I think it's, look forward to seeing what the commission brings back. Looks like they've got a lot to, to work with.
Councilmember Curtis.
I think the idea of bolding that somebody had is not a bad one. So you could organize them in any way that made sense. But the few that are at the top, bold those, and then that would tell people, aha, there's a list here, and there are a few that are more important. So.
And I guess my, my only concern is that it's a vision statement and not a mission statement. Vision statements tend to be a little bit more concise, to the point where mission statements tend to encompass a lot more. So if it's a vision statement, it's a vision statement.
Anything else? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to the next meeting.
So next item is staff report and status update on Parks Capital Projects. Mr. Dent.
It looks like Mr. Collins is waiting to say something, so I'll let him start.
Well, just so I don't forget the rest of the staff report, I'll just give it now.
Okay. Let's just go by A. Go ahead.
I just want to remind everybody about the volunteer appreciation event tomorrow at 6 o'clock at the 192 Lake Trail Tap Room. And let, and don't let the word tap room make you think it's not for everybody. It is for everybody. Little kids, everybody. So we hope those who have volunteered over the past year can join us. And then a little later on in the program, folks will be able to go and bowl across the street. So it's the city's little way of saying thank you for your volunteer service. And so I hope the city's little way of saying thank you for your volunteer service. And so, I hope the Planning Commissioners come as well, because they are volunteers. They have a meeting tomorrow night that starts at seven thirty, so we purposely push their start time out a little bit so that they could come and enjoy the, the volunteer appreciation.
So, it starts at six?
Six, yes.
Because I've got on my calendars at seven, so it's six.
Six o'clock.
Okay.
How, how late is it going? I'm trying to figure if I can stop by after driving up from Olympia, so.
Yeah, so I think people can start going over to bowl, starting after six thirty. So, I think be there between six and six forty-five. Yeah, I think you should catch most people.
I had it till eight, so if I was wrong on the start time, probably wrong on the end.
It, it'll go later. It will go probably until seven thirty or so, but people might start wandering off around even as soon as six thirty, so. And then, also, Deputy Mayor Van Ness mentioned Peter Kagayama, and we're going to have him come and work with our community in the beginning of April, April sixth and seventh. And he is the author of For the Love of Cities, and you may recall at a recent city council meeting, I showed you his presentation that he gave to the ICMA conference in September. And I was really affected by his, what he had to say, and his points really resonated with me, and I think they resonated with most, if not all, of you. And so, he's gonna come, and hopefully, he'll help even contribute to this comprehensive plan update and vision statement update that we're doing. And he'll come and work with the community on making our town, or taking our town to that next, more interesting, fun, walkable, vibrant level. So, he'll meet with the city council on Monday, the sixth, and then he'll work with the community the following day. We'll give him a little tour prior to the council meeting, so he'll know what our community's like and what we're dealing with, so. And we'll get the word out, as we usually do, through our normal channels. But that's all I have.
No.
Oh, you're right. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. So, I am recommending that we do not have a city council meeting on March ninth, given that three of you will not be here that night, and also, given the fact that we're having a meeting on March second. We need to have a meeting on March second to award the bid for the West A project. So, we took a look at the agenda, and we figured that we could postpone pretty much everything on that agenda, although there is a plat approval that we probably need to squeeze on the March second agenda to keep that particular customer on schedule. So, thank you, Mayor, for that reminder. March ninth, no council meeting. Any objections to that? All right.
Is it just me, or, I mean, I've noticed somebody, but it's chilly in here. Can we do something? Is there something that can be done? It's just chilly.
He pushed that little button that has the up arrow.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna have to wear a heavier jacket.
Are there four votes to turn up the heat?
I'm almost done.
Well, I can certainly take a vote if necessary. But I'm looking at people out there shivering and whatever, and so. All right. Next item on agenda, then. Mrs. Dent?
Thank you. So, you have a memo in your packet giving a status update on Parks Capital Projects. I hope it's pretty self-explanatory. One of the things that Rob wanted me to point out is included in your packet was an alignment or shown for the Top Pipeline Trail. And we're working really hard with the dollars assigned to this project to get a paved trail so it actually looked like trail improvements. It's on the, it's on, it's on the screen. I'm not sure what else to do on that, but it's in, it's in your packet, so you can see, then we can try and bring it up on the screen. There we go. Look at that. Maybe the extras here. So, the intent is to improve the trail. Here's sixty-eighth and right by Nod here. So, to do some additional paving, to remove the metal gate that's there right now at the entrance to the, to the trail, and replace that with some removable bollards. There'll be a ten-foot wide paved trail with two-foot gravel shoulders, and that will take you all the way from sixty-eighth. And if I can scroll down here a bit, it will keep going. Fortunately, it's on two sheets, so the paved trail will continue right to the point where it will connect with the trail in front of the townhouse buildings. So, again, we'll have a nice paved trail. It will connect in there to the existing paved trail. We don't, we didn't have quite enough money to get us all the way to, to Seventy-third. So, again, this is, I guess, the Phase A of the first phase, but we really wanted to make sure if we were going to do a project, that it would look like an improved trail. So, this is what we came up with. And right now, we're working through some issues with the City of Seattle, who own the right of ways, so we need their permission to make any improvements. So, once we've worked through those issues, we'll then move forward with permitting, and depending on the timing of the permitting, will depend on whether we're, we're able to actually get to construction this year, but we'll see what we can do.
So, this is better news than I, than I think what you had been previously been given. So, we're getting, like Debbie said, a ten-foot wide trail with two-foot wide shoulders on either side, and it's gonna be a raised trail. It'll also have a couple of pipes under it to help the water flow back and forth. Also, I think at least one of you or more asked that the gates, the unfriendly, unwelcoming gates be removed and have the bollards in their place, so we're doing that as well. So, but as Debbie just said, Seattle, City of Seattle wants us to do some additional studies that are gonna cost about thirty-five thousand dollars. That's not in our budget, and so that's the hang-up right now. We're trying to talk them down from that and help them understand that the studies and the site investigation and everything that we've already done is enough. So, but until we can convince City of Seattle otherwise, the project is halted. So, the good news is, get more done than we thought. Bad news is, we don't want to pay for thirty-five thousand dollars' worth of studies unless we have to.
Councilmember Herbie?
Which department are you dealing with?
Seattle Public Utilities.
Okay. First, what I want to say though is, I really am very excited to actually see this paved. I was not excited about this originally when you brought it up as a gravel trail, and this is a huge improvement. I really appreciate the work you guys put into, put in this. This is gonna be great.
Deputy Mayor?
Do, the trail connects to the trail or sidewalk south of the condos there. Then, when that reaches, what is it, Seventy-first, the street that goes in front of the condos? Then, is there a sidewalk on the south side of the street that goes out to Seventy-third? Do they have to cross the street to get to another sidewalk?
There is not a sidewalk right now on the south side. There is on the north side.
Okay, so, in order to connect here, you get across, you cross the street to go to the sidewalk. Is there a sidewalk on the north side?
Yes.
East of Seventy-first?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So, it's, it's not perfect, but I think it's the start of a really nice trail connection. And again...
Yeah, I like this much better, because I drive down one hundred and eighty-fifth, and if it's been raining, you know, there are two big sections of that trail that are underwater. So, we're raising it up and paving it, makes it, makes it useful and not muddy the rest of the time.
Councilmember Danuski?
Are the bollards going to be fun?
I guess we should make them fun. What do you mean by fun?
Not gray. You know, if you're, if you're taking a, well...
Maybe they get me herrings.
Who knows? But, you know, if we're taking out a gray metal gate and putting in gray bollards, I don't think we've really accomplished that, making it look friendly part.
You're right.
But I don't know how much money I'd have to play with it.
Good point. Needs to be fun.
Be fun.
Anything else?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it?
That, that's it, unless you've got questions on any other projects.
No, thank you. At least we're not getting a little simple wooden bridge for all that money for its choir's landings. I mean, at Loggins.
It will be a very nice bridge.
Very nice bridge.
Fun, even.
Yes, as long as it's fun.
Will it be gray?
All right. Next item, Reports and Comments. Councilmember Smith?
Yes, I have one item. As you will remember, a couple of months ago, we talked a lot about what could be done with the veterans tribute or something at the City Hall Plaza or across the street at the new plaza, and, and a lot of the comments referenced it would be better over here. I can tell you, the group that was working on that is terminated, so there is, there is nothing going on with that. But what I would like to do, if I can get the approval of the rest of you up here, to at least work with the mayor and with the city manager to find out if there's just some kind of little document that we can make it known when we do redo the front plaza here, if we can have some kind of a veterans' emphasis or tribute or something as part of that. I know there, this isn't something that I will probably be involved in at all, but I think it's a great spot, and I would hate to lose the momentum that has been gained to try to do something to recognize our veterans. And so, if we could at least kind of slip it into the, the memory bank of the city files as far as when the funding is available for that plaza, if that can be a component, and it could be as simple as, you know, gardens or who knows what, but just, there will always be somebody in the community, I'm sure, that would be willing to step forward and be a part of leading something to work with the city on that. And so, with your approval, I'd like to work with Rob and the mayor to see what we can come up with to at least know this gets addressed in the future.
I'm seeing a lot of nods and thumbs up, so.
Okay.
We'll proceed that way. Councilmember Sperry?
I don't know if it's in the plan to send a thank you to the North Shore School District representatives who came here today, but if we do, I think we need to include the ninety percent of the survey results saying that they strongly or, or agree with supporting high-quality schools. I thought that was pretty powerful in light of the presentation tonight.
No, and thank you, Councilmember Sperry. I, I think it's important. They did come here. We brought them here for a purpose, and they did explain it to us, but I still think it's within our, our purview, our jurisdiction, or whatever you want to call it, that we certainly can, can write a letter or comment, you know, that we strongly support maintaining the unity of the schools in Kenmore, because that's what brought a lot of people here. And, you know, there was not really much discussed as to where the lines were drawn, but I would certainly hate to see Kenmore Elementary with the problems and, and the demographic makeup of that school be split apart that way. So, I certainly would be in favor of having the city manager or somebody who likes to write a lot more than I do, draft that letter, so. I, I don't know. Where's the rest of the council on? Because he, Councilmember Sperry, you brought up a very good point there, that I, they were kind enough to come out, and I think that we ought to do the other half of it.
Well, I think that we certainly heard, you know, presoundingly from the community that the importance of, you know, that clear path and not dividing the school. And, and we also heard, you know, the, the challenges that they're facing, but it's never gonna, it never hurts to reinforce, you know, the desire that we've heard here expressed tonight to them and add it as part of their input.
So, we're all in agreement?
Ms. Danuski has?
Councilmember Danuski?
Yeah, I, I would like to see us do a letter thanking them for coming and then just, you know, reiterating that we'd like to keep Kenmore Elementary's cohort together and up through high school, but we should probably be a little bit careful on the part about the survey, because then you're telling the North Shore School District that their other school isn't any good, and doesn't really send a good message. So, you know, just keep it more, we'd like to see Kenmore Elementary's cohort stay together. We don't want to say Bothell High School is bad.
But also, we, we need to keep in mind, and I'm sure the, the city manager will word this appropriately, because they're a separate taxing jurisdiction, and we wouldn't want the school board telling the City of Kenmore how to run the city. But we could express our, our personal feelings as a group. Maybe it'd be a resolution, but maybe just a letter would be fine. But it's obvious that we've, we've heard from a lot of citizens that this is pretty important to the citizens of Kenmore.
Right. And they certainly have come to us with things when they wanted our backing on things, so it's, it's not unheard of that we go, we, we go to them.
We have supported their levies and all that.
Exactly. Councilmember Herbie?
I, I support sending a thank you note. I actually think going the route of a resolution might be a little more formal and might actually carry a little more weight.
I, I'm certainly not taking that off the table. I certainly think that's possible. It's just, I don't know what weight a resolution would have with them, that correspondence.
It just seems a little more official than sending a letter, but...
Didn't you just have a whole bunch of whereasses, and, and I don't know, I can get my, my thoughts through on a whereass? I mean, that, I'm sorry, that, the lady who talked about her kid and losing, you know, his friends that had his back really struck home with me. So...
And that's the kind of things I think we want. We want to keep those kids together for a whole bunch of reasons. If you think a resolution is better, I'm certainly open to a resolution. I mean...
There's no minimum requirement of whereasses that need to be in one. I think...
Absolutely not.
Right. I mean, I...
We'd have fifty, fifty whereasses.
I think we could cut down the whereasses, and I do think it would, it would make sense. I, I would only ask everything, whether it's a letter or a resolution, that it's of really high respect. I know we would.
Oh, yeah.
Or we wouldn't do it anyway. But I, I, to Alan's point about them being a separate jurisdiction, I just, that's really an important point, and so I think we can ask for whatever we want as far as letting them know our feelings, but, well, that's it.
I had some concern tonight that some of the citizens speaking thought that we could make the decision and change their mind, and that's not our role.
No, they, they, they were aware of that.
They had a few bullet points making that be clear.
They knew full well that they're their own people, but they wanted our help, too, so. Okay, so... Yes.
I was just gonna say, I think a letter, I mean, not just because I started with a letter, but I think it's, it's, you know, to the point of reiterating our concerns, and again, giving them that opportunity to thank them, because they, they didn't have to come. I mean, they really didn't have to do that.
Really appreciate them doing that.
And they spent a lot of time explaining it, and I, I think I understand the, the bigger picture now more, and I think it was good for all of us to hear it. And, and again, the citizens got a chance to express their concerns, which, you know, I hadn't heard directly, and I think all of us were moved, you know, by the different stories and how the, the kids are impacted.
No, I mean, I certainly learned a lot from this, and I was very grateful they were here to explain it. Councilmember Curtis?
I would prefer a letter. I think it feels a little more friendly and less formal. The resolution, and I'd feel something comfortable, somebody just kind of writing a letter and signing my name to it. But once it's a resolution, and it's all the whereasses, and it's all gotta be official, and I, I wouldn't feel comfortable that being sent without it coming back to the council and us discussing it and approving it, and so, I'd rather...
Why, I still envision that, that letter coming back, but in any event.
But the last, the last comment that I'd have is that the council, I think, was a little gun-shy about coming to talk to us, because they ran into a situation in Woodville a few years ago that was a real buzzsaw for them. And, and I think, I think they were well-received here, and, and we, and if we followed up with a similar attitude in the letter, I think it'd be worthwhile.
They, they watched the video from the last meeting. They understood where we were coming from, and they felt comfortable with that. All right. We got that done? Okay.
So, would you, would you like me to bring it back to you on March second, a week from Tuesday? tonight?
We do have that time that, that we can. You can bring it back, yes. Or at least run it by us.
Okay. And I'm hearing resolution or a letter?
Letter.
Letter.
Letter, okay.
Um, to start with, uh, Councilmember Curtis?
You can throw whereas in just, even in a letter. We had our coffee with the council on Saturday, and there was one safety issue brought up. The chain link fence along.
Yes.
68th has the top really hard iron rail.
61st?
61st?
61st.
61st, on the east side of the, of the street.
Right.
So the, the comment was if that were taken out and a, like, cable was put in, it would be safer fence.
Yeah, that cable, there is a few of the posts where that top rail was removed and a cable was put in, and they would like to see that top rail removed all the way down for safety.
Yeah, he's mentioned that, too.
Because when a car hits it in the height that it's at, it becomes something that impales somebody and has a couple of times. And by replacing that top with a cable. It was, said to us, it was safer.
Apparently, it's, it's a known problem with that particular style of fence.
Right.
And it was a design issue that's since been changed, but we still have one of those fences.
City manager, could you?
Yeah, we'll follow up with it.
Great, perfect. Councilmember Hurd?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Danuski?
Volunteering at the volunteer event tomorrow, so I'll see you there.
There you go. Deputy Mayor?
I have nothing.
Um, so I passed out something here that, on homeless. And there's a number of issues here where they're asking Sound Cities to take a position. They want to take a vote on the middle of April about this and to support this 10-year plan. And there's gonna be some changes in the strategic plan, and they're looking for feedback on some, on some definite areas here. So they want cities to repeal or mitigate local ordinances that criminalize people for being homeless. In other words, sleeping in parks and, and other things, making that, not having that be, be a criminal activity. They want to close the gap in the number of housing units in King County available to households below 30% of area in medium income. There's something in the King County code that says all cities in King Count, County have a deficit in affordable housing, and cities are required to have housing for 12% of their population to 30% below the AMI. So there's, there's three others, and I won't go through them. I've given you this. They're looking for councils to weigh in on this, so I have a choice of either voting yes, no, or abstaining from it. And Mrs. Bent also received one of these letters, and you're going to be bringing this to us here sometime in March, you said? I know I sort of hit you with this. Sorry.
Um, I, I haven't got a, a date for bringing this forward to council or not. I'm going to be learning more about this at the planning directors' meeting on Thursday, and I can take a closer look and see whether some of these strategies, how they're currently addressed in the city, whether they are policies in the comprehensive plan, whether they're addressed as, as being part of membership with Arch, or whatever those issues may be. I just haven't had a chance to take a look.
That's fine.
And report back.
But if we, yeah, if you, when you find out something, you can let us know, so we have an idea of how we want to do this.
When does the vote need to be made? When, was the vote gonna be taken on this?
April 22nd?
Oh, plenty of time, yeah.
Yeah, no, there's plenty of time.
It sounds complex enough. I'd like to have some more information.
My, I'm on the Board of Directors of Sound, of Sound Cities, and they're looking to adopt its final position on April 15th, so we have a little bit of time.
You do. And there's also the option, if you were interested in having somebody from Sound Cities come to give a presentation, I, I think I read that they're willing to do that as well.
They're willing to do that, yes. So if you want to schedule that, I will let them know tomor, Wednesday when I'm at a board meeting. Or we can do that before.
I'll, I get a little bit more information. I understand we'll need to report back so that you get direction from your colleagues.
Thank you very much. Um, all right. One, a couple of other small things, and. So we had talked the homeless issue. I'm gonna be representing Kenmore on Friday at the End Veterans Homelessness Conference down in Seattle with, with HUD. We are just working with the county and doing what the county's doing and supporting the county's efforts, because we're too small of an entity to really do stuff ourselves, but we can be a big support in, in the, in the county. I'm gonna go to the, to Veterans Administration tomorrow to help recruit disabled for the canoe and kayak programs. So we're gonna be working with a number of disabled vets and getting them interested in coming up here and becoming more active on the water. Good meetings in Olympia last week. I talked with Paulette and Frocht about ecology, and I think, I don't know how many of you read that letter today, that ecology said, "We're not doing anything, asking for any extra money. We're gonna study this issue a little bit longer." Paulette and I got into a long conversation about it, and it, it turns out that, I, I believe we also got a copy of the letter. And he didn't get the letter in the legislature. It came to his, his office, which was, he found quite surprising, and he was not very pleased about it. And that's all I have. So with that, we're adjourned.